Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approve of the agenda, we have one addition under new business nine B, that will be an update on the product capital improvement on the north project. Is there any other changes or corrections? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve of the minutes, October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting. All receive them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call it third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings and we have no reports and presentations. It was sent to our action items. Seven A, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-two, designating twenty twenty polling place. This is required by the state, even though, even if there isn't an election scheduled, we still have to designate a place for polling. Sock Center, City Hall is the office polling place for special and general elections in twenty twenty. That's what this resolution is for. Is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-two, designating the polling place?
Motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Joe, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-three, accepting grass rig platform quote. This is what we had, went out for solid quotes and we've received three of them. As you can see, Great Plains Fire was at eighty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars, Hyman Fire at seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, and Midwest Fire at a hundred and five thousand six hundred dollars. I don't know if Joe or Ben have got anything to add, other than, since you're both on the fire department, I was thinking you might have more detail on this.
I would defer to Ben on that, he's on the committee, so he'll probably be able to answer those questions.
All right, I'll have Ben come up.
The quote is for the truck bed unit itself, pump, dual hose reels, and includes changing out to a little more aggressive tire pattern and rim. There's a winch, all emergency lights, and then there's a whole center council that goes in for all the wiring that's associated with this, so this would be a turnkey package. We deliver the truck that we had ordered already in a five fifty down to Hyman Fire and they will take the truck then and build the box and make all the necessary modifications to turn it into a grass rig for us. So that's what this quote is for.
Okay.
And we recommend it going with Hyman, the low bid at seventy-four thousand seven seventy-three.
Okay. Council have any questions? Ben?
How close was this to the budgeted?
It's within five thousand dollars of what we're expecting to see, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ben. Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-three, accepting the quote for grass rig platform to be bought from Hyman Fire for seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars?
So moved.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Diane seconded it. Any other discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven C, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-four, requesting a speed study. Resident on East River Circle has requested the city look into lowering the speed limit on East River Circle. It's in his opinion that the traffic's moving too quickly, given the density and number of children living on the street. In addition, there are no sidewalks, so children have to walk on the grass or in the street. Resident has received a speed study brochure and it's up to the council to request if we want a speed study done by MinDOT, by resolution, or we can also deny it if we don't think there's a reason to do it. I'm looking for comments or questions.
What is the cost to the city to do a speed study?
Yeah. I was looking through their brochure, it doesn't really say, but you know, not necess- most city streets default to thirty miles an hour. That's the posted, you know, so, you know, if you're doing twenty-five to thirty on a city street, it may look like you're going a lot faster than what you actually are. I don't know if there's a cost.
Okay, I guess that would be my question, what does it cost? We don't need a speed study every time somebody-
And at this time of the year, if it snows, they're not going to be driving-
No.
-that, you know, I would think they're going to be slowing down, so I don't know if the idea of a speed study on a three-block or two-and-a-half-block stretch is going to be worth it.
I'd be more interested in just asking our police department, they're out there from time to time.
Yeah.
Do they think it's an issue?
And they're patrolling the area right now.
Yep.
So, we've requested that already, so I guess it's up to the council if they want to adopt the resolution requesting a speed study or to deny it, deny the request.
I'll make the motion to deny it.
Okay, we have a motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other questions or concerns, comments? I can understand the request based, based on the length of the street and the timing of it, you know, as far as the year, because next we're, you know, so-
Yeah.
I, I think it would be kind of like a waste of time for everybody.
For right now.
Not that the, yeah, for right now.
At this time, yeah.
It isn't a, it could possibly be a sa- public safety issue, but our police department hasn't stated any issues yet.
No, and are there any signs out there, children playing kind of signs? We've got those in some places.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be a more reasonable thing to just have awareness if there's a lot of kids running around in the neighborhood.
Right. Any other comments?
And so the only way to actually get this is with the MinDOT study, we can't make a call on our own, is that accurate?
Actually, it would, we could, if we wanted to, I think.
Well, if we've had a reason to lower the speed, I suspect we can, yeah.
It would be the same, since it's a city street, I think it'd be the same as us making a no-truck route or anything like that. You know, it's our street, but when it comes to speed studies, then basically MinDOT's the one that's always done them because they've got the-
And the equipment.
-time and the equipment and-
Okay.
-to do it, so there are other ways, but I'm not thinking the timing right now is a good fit.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that and we revisit it in the spring or find out what the cost would be, so we have more information at a later time if they want to reconsider.
Okay. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to deny the request. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven D, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-five, authorizing sale of excess property, police department. We had five vehicles that went on MinBID for sale through, for the police department of excess vehicles, nineteen ninety Oldsmobile Regency, two thousand Mercury Cougar, two thousand two Ford F-150, two thousand two Audi A4, and a two thousand six Chevrolet Impala. They were all sold by MinBID. Is there any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-five, accepting the bids and authorizing the sale of the vehicles.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Approve ordinance seven ninety-two and seven ninety-three, implementing rental licensing and inspection code. This is something that we've had our public hearing and now we're to the final point whether or not we want to implement it. We, the code is in the final form. Next steps would be to finalize the inspection form, appoint the inspector or inspectors, finalize the license fee, and implement the phased part in three sections. North of the river would be one section, south of the river, to the north of the Wobegon Trail would be the second, and then south of the river, or south of the Wobegon Trail. Basically, everything south of the trail would be the third part. Is there any questions? You received it in your packet. The one thing that I was looking at and made sure it was in was that in case we have a property owner that does not want to abide by the inspection rules, what our course of action is and it's laid out in there, that that would be a misdemeanor with fines and the right to rent the unit out would, would be taken away until they abide by the rules. And there are different levels of offense in here, so first action, unless there's comments or questions about anything, the first action would be to approve the ordinance seven ninety-two, implementing the rental registration and inspection code.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Next action item would be to approve ordinance seven ninety-three, authorizing the summary publication of the ordinance seven ninety-two. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven F, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-six, approving lot split, Sunny Max LLC. Sarah?
Good evening, Mr. Counsel. In your packet, on page thirty-five, you have the lot split information that Warren was referring to. Todd Johnson of Sunny Max Properties LLC, also known as Trinity Tools in Sock Center, is located in the Sock Center Industrial Park, is requesting a one-time lot split and combination. Sunny Max Property is the owner of the lot to the south of their existing building and their business address is six thirty-three Lincoln Loop. They are requesting to split the lot into two parcels and add the northerly portion to their lot where their building and business is located. So in the packet, you have a copy of the lot split application. And then you also had, we did have some discussion about having a utility easement around those uti- the utilities in the street, and on page, page forty-two is a copy of the survey. And where the, where the surveyor drew the line to split the lot is almost exactly where the water line is. And then the PUC also located the sanitary sewer line, which is eleven feet north of the water line. And typically, the PUC likes to have at least a five-foot clearance around their utilities for when people have to hook up to them or do any work in or, in or around those utilities. And so we had discussed the option of having like a small utility easement around that area, but they were, did not care for that option, and that's why you have that little copy of the letter on page forty-one from the Sock Center Public Utilities. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions, anyone have any comments as far as what we're looking at here? Basically, if you're near, look at that map and you can see where they want to split it, the water is in direct line with that property line and the sewer is just north. So when that other tract of land that they're splitting off want, is to be developed, the water and sewer are basically from that lot line to the north, there's no actual utilities that would actually go to that unless they can go into that north lot. They could do an easement around that just for a short distance so they couldn't tie that lot into water and sewer. PUC has said they don't like that idea because then they get these little easements all over the place. But if they, if we don't allow that and they want to move that property line closer so it's included with that southerly lot, it's going to cost the property owner, when they do this lot split, another survey fee. And they're not, they really don't want to have to pay a surveyor to move the lot line sixteen feet or whatever it is. So it's up to us whether or not we allow the split, the lot split as is or with an easement, so it's easier to tie in or have them re-survey it and move the lot line sixteen feet.
So what's the basis for the split and combination with the other lot? I didn't really go into detail on the application that I seen.
The owners are, they want to expand their business and add on to the existing building in the future, and they need a portion of that lot south of them to be able to help, to be able to meet the impervious lot coverage. And they also want to expand their parking, so they need a little bit more land to be able to do that. And then in the future, they would like to be able to sell the south part of this lot later on. So it is for an expansion.
They already own both lots, that was what I understood. So they're really looking at separating a small portion presumably to sell.
Correct.
But they're selling it now.
No.
No, they're not in a hurry to sell it, they just want to kind of get it ready for when they add on to their business in the next few years, they have the land available and they don't have to worry about the impervious lot coverage and like I said, the opportunity to sell the southern part of that lot.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused as to why we're, you know, it's not being sold. They already own it.
It's just when it comes to hooking up to the utility.
It's one of those, you know, if they sell it and somebody's hooking up, the utilities are not on that lot. I know that's problematic.
Right.
It always will be.
Yeah. So in this case, do we allow an easement there or do we? Or is there a possibility of when they do, some, they do sell that south, that south lot, that they have to agree to let whoever owns that, if they need to hook up, can cut into that one corner of their-
This is a public easement? I mean, oftentimes, you know, you have access easements that are more just private arrangement kind of things.
This would be a public easement? I mean, there is the, the standard easement along, like ten feet behind the curb.
Yep.
With the utility in there, but because if this is split where they drew the line, it's right on top of the water line and the sanitary line is still north of that.
Right, but I mean, those access points are all in the easement already.
They're in that ten-foot easement.
Right, they're, they're in that utility easement now.
Right.
So-
But if someone were to-
We're talking about an easement that is someplace else.
Well, it would be for if someone buys that south lot, portion of the lot, and they need to get access to the sewer and water, then there would be a utility easement for them to be able to, to hook up to that water or gain access to sewer water.
Right, but it would be outside of the easement we already have.
Right.
It seems like it's a private access at that point. Public utility ends at the cut, at the shut-off.
Right.
And that's already in a utility easement.
Mm-hmm.
The rest is private.
Right.
I mean, I know it's problematic and everything, but it's a certain amount of-
So basically, we're, it's kind of moot point as far as you're concerned?
To me, it seems like it's, it's, yeah, it's, that's, you know, when you put a sewer line in, you dig up to get to it, and if you have an easement on the adjoining property in order to do that, well, that's not, that's not the public utilities. The public utility ended at the, at the shut-off.
At the shut-off, yeah, okay. You understand?
You know, it seems to me that an easement is an acceptable solution. And private easements should not be the concern even of the public utility. If you have, if you and your neighbor have an easement agreement for a driveway or something, it's your problem.
Right. So basically, what it is, is we're already in an easement, utility easement, ten feet behind the curb.
Yeah.
And then when they do, if they ever sell that chunk of land, they can grant the new owner an easement to connect on to-
You know, whether you grant an easement because the land will have to be probably kept clear, there's not much you can do over that if it's got a sewer line under it.
Right.
I mean, it's just like saying, well, you could sell ten feet by, or sixteen feet by sixteen feet in the corner and just say, there, that's yours now, that little corner is yours.
When they sell it, sell the property.
When they sell it, you know, so there's, there's ways around that, it seems to me. It doesn't seem like a big deal.
All right, well, in that case, there's my paper. So, do we have a motion to approve the resolution two thousand nineteen eighty-six, granting the minor subdivision without-
I will make a motion to approve the lot subdivision.
The way it is drawn on the survey at this point?
I think this is all right, yep. They'll have to have their own arrangements with an easement, but as long as it's, you know, not a public utility easement anyway.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Joe. Any other discussion? Everyone understands what we were discussing here? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Seven G, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-seven, supporting EAB This is for Emerald Ashbore grant application. We've got two grants that we want to apply for, maximum grant on one of them is thirty thousand, the other one is a maximum of a hundred thousand. What this is, is we need to do a resolution as council level to showing support for the grant application, and now that they have phoned Emerald Ashbore down by Rockville and they, they're finding it more and more places.
I'm sure they're finding it all over the place, yeah.
The sooner we get our grant applications in, I think the sooner we can maybe help save some of our tax dollars.
Yep.
On covering it, if they're willing to give it to us.
Definitely.
So, with that, do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-seven, supporting grant application submitted?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven H, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-eight, authorizing quotes for turnout gear. Two thousand nineteen budget funds are the needed turnout gear. The department, fire department, applied for a FEMA grant in the end, FEMA did not grant us any funding for that, so we still need to replace it. Requests for helmets, boots, hoods, and gloves. The estimated cost of the above is twenty-seven thousand dollars and a similar request is anticipated again in twenty twenty. We purchased three new hoods in two thousand nineteen already, so that's the reason why there's a difference as far as thirty, thirty, twenty-seven, and thirty. I don't know, Joe, you got any? And Ben, I'm going to look at you two guys again, since you're in the fire department.
No, it's just a budgeted item, it's a point that we need to replace the gear, and so with the budget for the helmets, boots, hoods, gloves, we had three new firemen, that's why we're, the difference in the hoods, a purchase, but yes, part of the budget, it's just time.
Okay. Questions? Do I have a-
Motion to approve.
Motion, we have a motion from Dave, to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-eight, authorizing the quotes for the turnout gear, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against. Seven I, approved resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-nine, approving lot split for Magnificent Properties LLC.
The second lot split this evening, Broccoli Gels, doing business as Magnificent Properties LLC, is requesting approval for a lot split which will subdivide his newly constructed, constructed twin homes on Lot One, Block One of WH Kate's second addition. This plot was approved in two thousand nineteen, earlier this year, with the intent that the lots would be subdivided in the common wall of the proposed twin homes. And so they've completed the construction and are in the process of selling those. You have a copy of this ticket of survey and we're still waiting for the party wall We may have received that, I did check on it this afternoon. We have a copy of the application in your packet and a copy of the survey is on page fifty-four, and are there any questions for me about this lot split?
Questions, comments? This is something that we had tied in with the lot split, with the flat, so-
Yep. Just finishing things up.
So do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighty-nine, granting the minor subdivision?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, second by Joe. Any other comments? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, eight A, local option sales tax notice. All the businesses in Sock Center with the tax ID should have received a notice from the Department of Revenue detailing the process for them to collect and remit the local option sales tax recently approved by the city. You have a copy of the notice in your packet. The tax is to be remitted on purchases made beginning January one, twenty twenty. The tax is to be remitted on purchases made beginning January one, two thousand twenty. This is for information only. Is there any questions? I've had a few people show me the form they got from the Department of Revenue. It's slightly different for some reason. The ones that I was, was shown, it shows a half a percent for one thing and half a percent for another thing. So it looks like it's a one percent increase, so I'm working with Vicky on that to make sure that this gets corrected or make sure we're not interpreting that paperwork correctly, so. Uh, Trunk Highway seventy-one, pre-planning meeting. We've had our, regarding the twenty twenty-four proposed construction, we've had a meeting with the MINDOT. They're recommending a meeting be held with individuals of the city representing various interests. We're anticipating to have that in January or February. It will be a small group breakout session. And as of right now, Vicky and I are working on different people for them, small group session, to represent different areas. This, had a couple people interested in it, but at this point in time, we haven't got to that point where we need to bring them, those people in, we're just working with the ones that, so that's information only on that one, too. Eight C, Safe Route School Rapid Planning Workshop, that is moving forward. The workshop will be held on November fourteenth, and that will be an all-day session. So, two, seven fifteen to eleven thirty, and then there'll be a break and another one from twelve to four fifteen. That is to look at any roads or sidewalks, safety crosswalks, everything. Actually, we'll be going to the schools and seeing how foot traffic compares to traffic and so that's, anybody that's want, interested in taking that day off of work and coming to sit in this workshop is more than welcome, so.
I wish I could.
But it would be, so that's another informational item. We'll move on to new business, capital improvement planning. Keith? Or if you want to, you can do the update, too, since we've got.
Yes, I'll be doing that. I'll, in fact, why don't I, if you don't mind, maybe I'll do the update first and then we'll do the capital plan afterwards. Um, so update on the capital improvements project, you know, we're basically done for the year. Things are looking pretty good out there. If you've driven through, all the seeding and things have been done. Really, next year is just any final little cleanup items and the last lift of pavement and pretty much wrap up that project. So, there are a couple of items of note, um, some reseeding was done, regrading, reseeding was done on the Egan and the Sobrowski properties. There were some issues with those, so that was taken care of. Uh, the Egan, the driveway, there's some issues on the concrete. It was actually not only a city portion, but the owner paid for the rest of the driveway to be done, so it was kind of a private thing. Workmanship with some issues. They are, be replacing that driveway in the spring of two thousand twenty. So that will be next spring. The, the owner is aware of those things. Uh, and then there's, uh, on the alley, the Easterly, excuse me, Westerly Alley. Um, there's a planter box that still needs to be dealt with and moved. I can't remember the lady's last name. It's Leslie something. I don't remember her last name, but, um, so we're still working. That's an ongoing kind of issue as to how to move. She wants it right at the property line, which is essentially right at the edge of the road. We prefer that to be a little bit further back, so we'll be having some discussions and trying to make that a safer situation for that. So, uh, that's where we're at with the status of it. One other issue that's come up is the topsoil issue. Um, the topsoil, uh, there've been some concerns with it. Um, we did, actually did some testing on it and we found that the topsoil did not meet our specifications. Not only it was kind of low in silts, this is kind of general, but low in silts, which kind of helps some of the water stay with it. And it was low in nutrients as well, so it didn't have enough organic compounds in it. Well, it was kind of sandy, essentially kind of like what I would call kind of a sandy black material, so it wasn't as much organic as, as it should be. That's why the representatives from, from Breitbart are here tonight and they may wish to, you may wish to ask them, or they may wish to say a couple of words here. But a couple of things we can talk about. One is, you know, there's kind of a do nothing option and, you know, it's growing fairly well at this point. If you've gone and looked at it, it's growing pretty well. Generally, we'd expect if it doesn't have enough nutrients and it's a little more sandy, when it gets dry, it perhaps would, would dry out a little bit quicker than, than normal, so that would be one issue. So, doing nothing is one option. The other end of the spectrum is essentially remove and replace. That obviously would be very disruptive to the residents again and go through that whole process. So I'm not sure that's the best option. One of the things we've discussed with the, uh, with the contractor is coming up with something that's kind of in between. We've looked at, uh, doing some additional fertilization and additional supplements to the soil, and these would both be broadcast type things, so not, not invasive to the, to the property. And the, in particular, the, the supplement is, uh, it's to provide some organics. It's to, it's got materials in there that, that make the, uh, the nutrients bind to the sand particles so that you keep some of those nutrients there, so they don't essentially leach through and get down into the, to the subsoil. So it keeps those nutrients in the root zones. So that is one thing that the contractor has brought forward as a potential, uh, solution for, for that. We've talked about that at, at the next meeting we're gonna talk about, but at, at the, the joint meeting that we had on Monday with the P U C and with, with city staff. And, and that's kind of where we're thinking might be the best way to go, is kind of that middle of the, the road. That's obviously up to you to, to give us some guidance upon that, but we think that that may be the best way to do it. We'd like to do that in the spring, um, see how it's growing through the, through the summer. There was some discussion as to whether we keep a, um, uh, a contingency to perhaps do another application in the, you know, kind of late summer, early fall again, depending on how it looked, how it was growing, that kind of thing. Eventually, the nutrients will come because as it's growing, as people are mowing the yards and stuff, they will, the nutrients will naturally just by, you know, just by decay, if you will, of the, the, the grass, the nutrients will come there. But it's, so we're sort of trying to get a jump start on it chemically wise, if you will, before that natural process sort of takes over. So that's kind of the thought process that we have at this point, so. I'm not sure if Breitbart was, has any, if you would like to make any comments relate to it, you don't have to, but if you would like to. But otherwise, I would answer any questions that the council may have related to that.
Council level?
And also kind of looking for some, some guidance as to which direction you would sort of like us to steer towards on that issue.
Is, is the black dirt that was brought in, is that pretty much for the whole project, or is there just certain spots that are deficient that we're gonna see a big problem in? You know, and there's no need to try to fix the whole works if there are sample, you know, if we got soil samples from twenty different spots and ten of them are good, there's no need to touch it.
We didn't, we didn't do that many soil samples, so it's kind of a representative of what we think is there. Obviously, when you take out top, topsoil piles, you might have one spot that's a little better soil and other spots that might be even lower soil. So yeah, it's a, it's a bit of a mix. I think both sources were the same, right, Les?
There were two samples taken on one street. On that street, there's sixty, seventy percent of the original topsoil, so I would say. So, there was no other samples taken from the first days.
You wanna come up?
Just, just.
Yeah, that's fine.
Other, see, period.
There's, there is no other examples yet taken from any other days. It just was picked out on one street at this point.
Okay.
So, and, and according to the standard specs that are in the spec book, it does meet it, but the sand, it, it's high, it's over. That's what, that's what, what happened. They're basically, the organics are low, but they're within the guidelines. And like I said, what we thought is, we got this Tom Jamison, he's out of Helena, that recommended this. He's a guru on seeding and stuff like that. He said this stuff would really improve and help it out to start with. Then after so long, when the people mow their lawns and stuff and take care of their lawns, it's just natural. It just depends what the people are gonna do later, too. But this is a supplement that get it going, make sure it stays going until they can take over and get more of the clippings and vegetation.
And then basically, after you put that on, you're gonna have to reseed it?
No.
Nope?
This is a, like a fertilizer. It's a, it's a organic fertilizer and a hydrohume. This hydrohume is a chemical with it that keeps this moisture in the soil longer, so it don't degrade through the sand. Since it's a savior soil, that holds moisture longer, give the, the fertilizer a chance to give the roots growth, is what it is.
Okay, all right.
It's, it, it amends it. It's like amendment to the soil, they call it, is what it is. It's trying to get all the nutrients kept in the soils, stuff like that.
So in layman's terms, it's basically a Band-Aid until nature can take over and do it right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay. Council got any other questions, or what's your direction?
I, I think that's fine. Treat it. Recommend that people mulch instead of bag.
Yeah, and I don't know what all, everyone does it. We can't really control that, but, um, you know, this will definitely help get this started. It really looks pretty good the way it is, but, um, but there's that, that risk because it's real sandy that you'll end up, you know, it's getting into July next year, we might have more issues with it, really kind of burn it up than, than other areas that would be, so. This really just, like you said, it's a nice Band-Aid and it makes, it gives us a good fighting chance that we'll have a, a nice lush lawn through the summer and then things should, na- nature should sort of take over and be fine after that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Who's paying for this?
Uh, it would not be us, so.
Okay, and do we have some sort of a contract?
I hope Chuck has talked about to you with this, yes.
Okay.
Or subcontractor.
Okay.
Same contract, but didn't seeding for the lot.
Just as long as we have it in writing somewhere and.
Yeah, it's all part of the, you know, contract.
This would be part of, right. This would be a change order. We would, it would be essentially a zero dollar change order.
Okay.
But we would get it so that it's in writing that way.
Right, so. General consensus that we just let them proceed with the supplement and go from there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much on that. Um, thank you, appreciate that. Uh, next then is, as I mentioned, we met, uh, in a joint meeting on Monday with the P U C staff, city staff, myself, and to talk a little bit about capital improvements planning, kind of what, what we'd like to see get done, what are the problem areas in town, sort of between now and the, the Highway seventy-one project, or main street project. So that's scheduled for, might get started kind of in the fall, late summer, fall of two thousand twenty-four and into two thousand twenty-five. That's kind of the schedule for construction on that project. Uh, what you had before, you had passed out a, it's a one-page, eight and a half by eleven sheet, should be at each of your desks. Got the, it's a color-coded area. These are ident, the areas that we've identified as being the priority projects kind of within this timeframe. I will at least say in the, in the near term for, for us. Uh, the hopes would be to get all of these in prior to the, the large Highway seventy-one project. If you look at the Elm Street North and Lake Street project, um, that one, uh, those of you who have driven that anytime recently, especially about the middle third of that project is, the street is just falling apart. And Ben, please, Ben, if I say anything, characterize or please come up and say something, but, um, we think that street's gonna be nearly gravel within one to two years, so it's getting really bad. It's breaking up badly up there. Utilities in that area are old, but there's, haven't really experienced too many, too many issues, but the road's falling apart on top. But the utilities are, are aging and are old underneath. And you might recall, we even kind of looked at this area with the project we're just finishing, as to maybe this should be part of it. We decided to cut it out, but, you know, now it's, it's coming due that maybe we need to do something there. The other areas at Elm Street South, those two blocks, it's actually that little corner at the bottom end over to Grove Lake, right by the ding dong. So that's kind of the, the next project area we'd be looking at. That one in the north block, um, that we have serious utility issues through. There we have blockages all the time in the sanitary sewer. Uh, we've had backups into the home, I think a couple of times an occasion now, so there's, there's issues there. That's in the north block. The south block, the roadway is really in bad shape and sort of falling apart in through there. So that's another kind of priority area that needs to get taken care of. Um, I'll jump to the, the blue area, which is the Hickman Drive and Park Road. There we're looking at, and we've talked a little bit about this in the past, that's probably be a two-inch mill and overlay through that area to bring that street back into a, a good serviceable condition for what it is now. And then the large, the red area in the middle, that's kind of, we've talked about this in the past, too. This is kind of our next larger reconstruct area. Uh, we would see that as probably being, once again, like a two-year project. It might not be a full two years, but year, year and a half or thereabouts, construction season to do that kind of area. Uh, that's one of our major areas. It's got very old utilities. The roads are in bad shape. So that's kind of our next big one. So, kind of the question is, and we talked about, you know, what's, could be the phasing for these? What might be willing to enable to bite off over the next few years? And then, let me back up one step. The next thing is, we did talk about, um, Tenth Street and the, the parking lot for, for the arena. Kind of thought, well, you know, how much can we really bite off through here? Uh, I was asked about this actually prior to the meeting and just roughly, I would say, doing that air, doing the road and doing the parking lot is probably another half million dollars roughly to do that, that portion, if that was added to this. It's not shown on here. So you get a sense of what kind of dollars we're, we're kind of talking about. Now, we could break, you know, any of these could be individual projects. The Elm Street North and Lake Street could be a, a project we do one year. Um, the Elm Street South could be a project we do one year. The, the Tenth Street, the sign on here, could be a project we do one year. But we don't have that many years, you know, so, um, a couple of these, would they have to probably at least be combined? We're kind of targeting the, the, the large project. We were thinking maybe like twenty-one, twenty-two would sort of be that timeframe for the second street area and through there. So we're thinking, can we squeeze in the project in two thousand twenty? Ideally, we think the north, the Elm Street North or Lake Street either by itself or potentially, if you're willing to consider doing that and Elm Street South, doing those two pieces together. If you wanted to, because they're somewhat close proximity, add the Tenth Street if you felt we could take that on. Now, Vicky isn't here to talk about the, you know, the bonding and stuff, so she'll have to weigh in on some of this. She did roughly talk about it, but, um, you know, the smaller projects, we probably would do some internal funding for that if we did all three of them. I can't say whether that could be done. Uh, that would be something that Vicky would have to weigh in on that, but, um, but I'm not sure it's out of the question based on, on the comments she made, but, um, she would have to really speak for that and see if we could do that. Then I'm thinking the large one. I'm thinking probably the overlay would be after the large project. That's kind of what I would see, the, bringing the best timing for doing those, because that's still in decent shape. We can wait a couple of years on that one and then do the mill and overlay on that, on Hickman and Park Road. So that's kind of what we're thinking. Um, if we want to do something in two thousand twenty, the, the key is we actually really need to get moving rapidly. And depending on how much you might want to do in two thousand twenty, the urgency increases by that. We can get these, in fact, all three of those we talked about, including the Tenth Street, it could be done. But we would have to do some, you know, some fast tracking. We'd have to be working on plans. At the same time, we're doing the feasibility reports and going through public hearings and so we, you know, that would, you would have to be aware of that, that you would have to authorize that. It's never, uh, uh, you know, we likely will do the project, so even if you decide, you know, let's hold off, we just stop what we're doing, put it on the shelf, pick it up and, and continue on in the future. So it's not really a loss, you know, by doing it, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that. But that, that's really what would need to be required in order to get things done so that we could bid them early enough in two thousand twenty to, to make sure we have good, solid bids for them, so. That's kind of what I have for you tonight. Uh, we're not asking for any decisions tonight. You certainly could if you want. That's entirely up to you, but we're not asking for any decisions tonight. However, we do think we would want to consider this strongly in. However, we do think we would want to s- consider this strongly and decide if you want to do something, at least at the next meeting, at the latest. Otherwise, it really is just going to get too late to do anything. So, so time is of the essence on these, so. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have um, on this.
Questions?
We've talked previously a few times that um, Eighth Street has got brought up, Eighth Street South. Um, and with the Safe Routes to School grant, the possibility of needing um, sidewalks at the same time, is there any, has there been anything discussed about?
We haven't really, I mean, Eighth Street's on our radar. We haven't really, didn't talk about it very much at this meeting. In fact, we didn't talk about it all, I don't believe. Um, because these are kind of our priority areas. If you recall, we've, we've assessed all of the infrastructure, including the, the surface, the roadways. This is where it's telling us we need to focus our energies, plus the problems we have such as the utility with the issues on Elm Street South. Um, those obviously are, are, are concern areas um, that need to get dealt with.
One of, one of the things.
The good news is, once these areas are kind of done, there's a lot of other areas, but they're sort of in that, at least in that middle of the road and not getting to the crisis kind of areas anymore. We don't have too many of them left once this kind of gets taken care of. But there are areas definitely where, you know, we have to keep at it. The bottom line is, if we don't keep at it, we'll just have too much. I mean, we need to take up, you know, chunks that we can bite and keep at it, otherwise they just snowball and you end up getting a pile. Ideally, some of these big two-year reconstructs, it'd be nice if we didn't have to do them. But it's, really is in the best interest of the city to do them now. In the future, hopefully, we can make them a little bit smaller and more manageable kind of projects. So we're playing catch-up.
One thing is with the Eighth Street South, and I know your concerns. It's when we do trunk Highway seventy-one, we're, as far as the way I understand it, we're planning on going one block on either side of Main Street to extend out.
That's correct.
Basically, those roads on both, one block each direction at every intersection is going to be redone, all the way.
Right.
I guess, well, it's beyond just that block. I think that I'm concerned with is, I travel it frequently and I guess that's why I'm, I'm more focused on it because it's not wide enough. It's, there's not curb, decent curb on either side. I know the utilities are.
Which part were you talking on? Sorry, I missed.
So the, it would be the east side, Eighth Street heading towards, so viaduct head up right towards the high school.
As, just as you leave Main, you mean, that section?
As you leave Main and go up all the way to Birch Street or Ash Street.
That is, that is in bad shape.
Terrible.
Yeah.
And even if it's a mill and overlay project, but I guess I'm thinking about the fact that if we've got the Safe Routes to School and most likely, there could be a combination of sidewalks or something happening at the same time, because there is none. There are no sidewalks on this street.
One of the issues that's on that road and is that road's not wide enough.
Right.
Be, but there is no easements. The property, the, the back of the curb is actually people's property lines down that street. So unless Safe Routes to School or somebody has money to buy a six-foot chunk to put a sidewalk along that road.
We're never going to see it.
You're never going to see it. Because, and the only reason why I know that is because I was born and raised on that street and I know where them pins are.
And, and no quote, we actually drove that road on Monday. I know it's in very bad shape. Um, that one's probably too far gone for a mill and overlay. Um, that probably would be a full-depth reconstruct, at least of, of the road. Um, so that, unfortunately, we have a number of blocks like that and as I said earlier, we are trying to play catch-up. You know, we need to get to a certain threshold and then the city, and it, it's probably going to be leaders after you that need to be moving forward with doing, continually doing updates. Otherwise, we end up with this problem that we're in now, where it's just, everything is going bad, you know, all at the same time. Um, and you're not alone in this. Many, 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 many cities are in the same situation. Um, because we, we bury stuff and we forget about it and then all of a sudden it becomes problematic.
One of the recommendations I've got, unless the council feels differently for tonight, is that uh, we seriously, at the next meeting, consider doing that Elm Street North and Lake Street along with the Elm Street South project and bring that back and give formal direction to the engineer to get that fast-tracked. I, I don't know if Dave knows what the utilities are on Elm Street South, if that'll last any longer than next year, if they've already got those issues.
You must have gotten that information when you were meeting.
Yeah, we got that. The utilities said loud and clear that that's, that's their highest priority is that section.
Okay.
Elm Street South. Elm Street South.
And for, and the city, Ben's, I think, highest priority is the roads falling apart on Elm Street North.
Elm Street North and Lake Street, I know that's going to probably turn into.
Now is that, that, the road is falling apart. Um, the utilities are not so bad.
Well, the utilities are aging. We haven't experienced problems up there. You know, we haven't, we don't have to do excess cleaning, those kinds of things. But the utilities are old and through there.
What, what, the only part about that that I wonder about is you're just talking that they're going to go a block off of Main Street. Well, that's Lake Street.
Right.
Are we, are we just going to dig it up again when the highway comes?
Well, we, we, we wouldn't dig it up again. You know, what we would probably do is stop, you know, at the right of way. We probably wouldn't go all the way to Main Street.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean. It's kind of like, but if we're going to, if we plan to dig that up in a couple of years, do we need to dig it up now? Or should we just wait until that happens?
Wait and do it, yeah, the question is.
You know, Lake Street is included in that and Elm Street is just a little stub off of it. Elm Street North is, you know, easily would continue.
Can we go around the corner? Can we come around the corner from Elm Street, just partway onto Lake and then stop?
Well, we could, yeah. We could go partially and, you know, it's kind of a, a little bit of a hill there.
Because if that's going to turn into gravel, we're going to, you know, eventually, we're going to see any type of rainfall. We're going to have wa- dirt going in people's yards and then eventually making it into the lake and we're going to have more issues than.
Yeah.
Thank God if we, if we leave that, so.
We, we talked about the Lake Street and seventy-one, the connections. Um, I don't foresee seventy-one changing sign, anything significantly in its profile. I mean, you know, it's vertical. So, I mean, I suggest that we could probably go up to the right of way and that would be sufficient for us to make adjustments to connect into seventy-one, because I don't think that's really going to change. Because it really can't. When you think about all the boulevards on either side of it, it, it can't really go, certainly can't go up. It could potentially go down a little bit, but that's, that's really about it. Otherwise, you start having really problems on the, on the boulevard, so. I'm not too concerned about, as long as we don't go up to it, we'd stop short, give us a little bit of buffer so that we could do, I think we could do it. But we could also stop a little further back. That would not be the end of the world by any means to, to do that.
My rec, you know, it's up to the council, but as far as I'm concerned, I think we have Vicki put this on the agenda for the next council meeting. We think about what we want to do. Um, at that time, she can have numbers put together as far as what we can, you know, if we, with those two projects, what they would be and if we did, decide to add Tenth Street and the hockey arena onto it and get that, because that's already down to gravel on Tenth Street. So, and then at that time, we can give Keith his marching orders or tell him he's got the winter off or I don't, you know.
Go home, put my feet up.
If that's the council's, if the council wishes to do that, you know, general consensus, bring, put it on there.
I think that's fine. Yeah, never hurts to look, so.
And then that way, we got numbers to go by at the same time.
My, uh, if I can, my only request to the council is, I unfortunately will not be able to be here at the next meeting. So you have some questions, if you think about it, if there's any way you could get them to Vicki so she could relay them to me, so I could, I could answer them through her and through Chuck for you, so that you guys can make sure.
They can contact me and I'll call you or whatever.
Yeah, so that I can, I can get your answers if you have anything beforehand. I think it's fairly straightforward, but um, you know, the numbers I have on here are probably a little high. These are really rough. These are not, these are beyond feasibility level, so these are rough numbers. Um, we didn't want to be low, but you know, I suspect they're within ten, probably ten percent on the high side, I would guess. Um, from where maybe the feasibility would come in for it, so just to give you an idea.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. We have schedule of claims, unpaid claims of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Paid claims of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for a total of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, we have resolution number two thousand nineteen dash eighty-nine, accepting contributions of a hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cents from the men's card-playing group to be allocated to the senior center and fifty dollars from Thomas Pischka for, to be allocated to the fire department. And on behalf of the council and the rest of the city, I want to thank those people for their contributions. Uh, we have a gambling application for exempt permit requests from Holy Family School for a raffle on December eighteenth, two thousand nineteen at Holy Family School. Is there any questions about the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five in favor, none against. We have no informational items. That brings us to our, end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, seconded by Diane. Call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, five in favor, none against. Meeting adjourned.